Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of July 26, 2023. The city council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Community members are welcome to join either in person, remote via Zoom, or by calling in. For those who wish to participate in the future on Zoom, you'll find the instructions to register for public comment on the city of Everett website under the City Council Department. Please note, we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Mayor Franklin.
Excused.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Schwab.
Here.
Councilmember Fossey.
Here.
Councilmembers Arlingo.
Here.
Councilmember Vogel.
Here.
Vice President Tuie.
Here.
Presidents, don't cipher.
Here.
I'd like to ask Vice President Tuie, would you please lead us in the flag salute? Yes, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Councilmember Vogel, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
Yes, thank you. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shtehochs people and their successors, the Tulelip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. And next, do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes of the July 17th and 19th meetings?
Councilmember Schwab, so do.
Seconded.
Any questions or comments before we take the role? Councilmember Ryan.
For attendance concerns, would they need to be separated?
Thank you. I will ask if we can take the motion back to just the July 17th meetings minutes first.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. We're voting on the July 17th minutes. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Ryan.
Upstain.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Vice President Tuie.
Yes.
Presidents, don't cipher.
Yes, and now I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the July 19th meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any questions or comments? Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Ryan.
Upstain.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Upstain.
Councilmembers Arlingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Vice President Tuie.
Yes.
Presidents, don't cipher.
Yes. And Mayor is out this evening, so I'll move to Angie. Hi, Angie, do we have anyone signed up to speak for public comment this evening?
Good evening, Presidents, don't cipher. We do, we have one individual online, and I just need to ask if you would like to speak now or wait until we get to your item on the agenda, Shola. Can you hear me, Shola? Okay, do you, I can't hear you. Nope. One sec, let me just see if there's something. Okay, try speaking now. No. You're not muted on my end.
It's us.
Oh. Okay, Shola, we actually, I just found out that it is on our end. If we can come back to you in a little bit, would that be okay? Thank you, sorry about that. So, we have some individuals that wish to wait until we get to item eight and item 11, but I have two that wish to speak now. So if Sean could come to the podium, and please state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak, and just press the button, the right button. There we go. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Sean Carmel, and I am an Everett resident. I spoke last week about the Center for Human Services. The Executive Director, Beretta Gomillion, also spoke. The agency is attempting to purchase a building at 2716 Colby, but the zoning code specifically 19.05.110 has a restriction on social services operating at the ground level in the mixed-use zone in the metro Everett area. We did, I felt compelled to come back tonight because we did receive a follow-up email from the mayor's office on Friday from Jennifer Gregerson, I believe was the name, indicating that increasing the density of social services in this zone was, and this is a direct quote, "not in the long-term vision for the area." And I am concerned for a couple of reasons, and I did send an email to each of you prior to this meeting, just giving a fuller breakdown than I can do in three minutes. But the way that this is zoned, putting social services under one broad umbrella, and the way that social services are being looked at in the context of this email, my concern is that it's way too broad of a brush. Social services are a wide array of services, each one of them serving very different needs in the community, and each one of them has a vastly different impact on the direct area which they're located. The zoning code, given that it applies to churches and food banks as well, seems to be attempting to restrict, businesses is the wrong word, but entities that would create lots of congregation directly outside that entity or that entity or business, which I think is extremely valid, but it is preventing agencies that do work that doesn't have that kind of impact and that are not currently represented in the zone from operating. For example, CHS is looking to bring early in childhood mental health services to this area, as well as school-based services for Everett School District, which is something that they provide in a lot of other school districts today. But in order to provide those school-based services, you really need that counselor to have an office that's close to the school for when the school is not in session, right? For that ongoing counseling to be successful. So, my wife is a teacher at Everett High School. I have a daughter that goes to Everett High School. I know the need for mental health services directly in schools. This is an agency looking to fill that need in the community that doesn't currently exist, but the way that we're zoning right now and the way that we're painting social services with a broad brush is preventing them from purchasing that location and operating out of it. So, I hope you'll take the time to read my email and let me know just a little bit more on your thoughts of if you share that opinion, that that's really the vision for this area of the city, and if we're really zoning and looking at social services in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Dennis, if you could please come to the podium? Dennis?
I thought it would be the last one.
Nope. So please state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Is this working right now?
Yep.
Oh, my full name is Dennis Lee Wagner. And my, what did you need? My house, where I live?
No, just your city of residence.
Oh, I live in Stanwood.
Okay.
But I have a lot of property in Everett, and that's what I'm telling you. So I'm here to talk about QFC because my property is adjacent to QFC, and I'm having a tough time, you know? I've been on that corner 25 years, a lot of homeless issues. I don't mind the homeless because I used to be homeless, and that's a fact. So, I kind of help them out, and I help certain homeless people out constantly. But it's getting a little tough on me when you go to QFC and they're shooting heroin or doing drugs right when you walk in. So, so we walk in there to the manager and we say, hey, they're doing drugs right here, and he says, call the cops. So, what I'm telling you, there's no security at QFC. And actually, if you look at that booklet I gave you, they're supposed to sweep half of the street. The school district's supposed to sweep the other half of the street. And there's some shrubberies between the tennis court and QFC where they're sleeping all the time. And I think there's a law where you can't sleep on the sidewalk where you block people from walking. So, there's defecation there. It's horrible. And I call the cops at least every other day to help. They're shooting heroin right behind QFC. There's like 19 people there, that's where they go. So, I want some help here. So, I mean, can somebody get ahold of QFC, or what do I do? Does anybody have any ideas? I didn't even want to be here, actually. So, I didn't want to show up with the hat and all this stuff, but I got to do, we got to do something, it's crumbling. We're crumbling here. I mean, I have leased and sold more property than anybody in the downtown area, maybe 100 buildings. Leased more than anybody, but it's real hard to lease when you have broken windows, people sleeping in front of the spot, you know? The old toggles is not there, I have a guy sleeping there. I love the guy, you know? What can I do? Do you have any ideas? Can anybody, Don, what should I do? Brother, got any ideas for me?
They may be able to respond during council comments, but they can't converse.
Okay, anyway, I gave you the book there, I didn't make the book up. I mean, you can see by the photographs when people are walking from the North Middle School, little kids, and they're shooting heroin. You can, I gave you a picture, I took pictures. Come on, it's all there. I mean, we sent it to the principal, to the school, to the mayor, to the police chief. What can I do? You know, I'm almost 80 now. I'm downtown Dennis. I came here broke, I'm a millionaire. I'm not bragging, I made it. My wife and I made it. But now I want to be out of town, Dennis. Get me out of this. I want to sell my building. All the homeless come here, why don't we, why don't we give the, why don't we have maybe, that should be a homeless shelter, something? I know you can't comment, but.
They can comment.
But anyway.
I'll need you to wrap up, Dennis.
I'm going to say goodbye.
Thank you. That's all we have for now until we get to item eight.
Thank you.
Actually, sorry, I have to check in with online, one moment.
We're ready for online.
Okay. Shola, go ahead and unmute yourself and turn your camera on. And when you see the clock.
There it was.
Oh, just one moment. When you see the clock, then you can start speaking, just a moment. Okay.
Hi, Everett City Council. I'm Ulus Shola Bonnduro, or Shola for short.
Shola, wait. I'm saying that because over here you're really loud and it's hard to hear. So, let's figure this out before you give us your story. Thank you. Hi, Shola, can you turn down your volume, please? When I asked you to turn it up, I guess we went too far up. Thank you.
Is that better?
A smidge more, please.
Better?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, my apologies for that. So, yeah, hi, Everett City Council, I'm Shola, or Ulus Shola Bonnduro, or Shola for short, and I live in Everett. And I wanted to just give a comment in regards to the matter of the Waits Motel. Now, I went to the Waits Motel for like a sort of cookout that was happening, and I have to say that I've heard many stories about the Waits Motel, especially many years ago, being a rather tough spot where there would be stories of people, you know, violence and illicit drug use and so on. And my experience going there this past Sunday was very different from what I've been hearing about it. And I have learned that the current property manager is trying to turn things around with it. And I do understand that there's a lack, maybe trust may be limited because of the long history, and some have even said there have been cycles of a seemingly getting better, but then getting worse. But I have to say that one of the things I've been thinking about lately is how, well, to put bluntly, everyone in the council, you all share that you are modern homeowners. And when I went there this past Sunday, I noticed there were a number of people that were there who were Black Indigenous. There were at least three other Black folks, and there were like at least four or five Indigenous folks that attended the event. And thus, I want to invite you all to consider, is it that, that those who have been at the motel are of certain demographics that have been underserved and haven't gotten the resources and support they needed, and thus, that's why we've had many use of it having these issues? Is it the right choice to condemn it rather than consider how you could effectively support the current property owner who seems to really want to turn things around for it? And according to some who have, others who I've talked to, she's becoming in good faith, and many, at least two in the council have even expressed that they were impressed by their drive to try and make things better. I would like for you all to really think long and hard about as whether or not actually condemning it would be in the best interest of those who are there, given that they could be displaced, and then there'd be another bunch of unhoused folks that people would be complaining are being a nuisance. So, if you, whether or not you're going to condemn it, I want you all to really think about those who are still there, who are living there, and how many of them are more like me than y'all. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Shola. Presidents, don't cipher, that's it for now.
Thank you. We will move on to council comments and liaison reports. Welcome back, Councilmember Ryan.
Great, good to be here, thanks, everybody. Thank you so much for our commenters tonight, I really appreciate and hear your words, and they really sit with me, not just during the meeting, but all week long when I think about council, probably way more than I should. But I really appreciate the folks that joined tonight. A couple of comments, I think, kind of tying together what Sean had brought up this week and the commenters from last week as well, I did watch the meeting, and owe you an email. And then also for Dennis that's here as well, I wanted to share that an upcoming discussion item at our Parks and Quality of Life Committee is about downtown vacancies and how we can work on lifting some restrictions that are maybe archaic or unnecessary or not applicable anymore so that we can lift barriers for more businesses to fill in those vacant spaces downtown, and hopefully with a more vibrant downtown, we'll be able to maybe have some unwanted behavior not exist in that space anymore. So, I'm hopeful that with that discussion, we'll be able to have some really meaningful changes come so that we can fill up some storefronts and maybe get an ice cream shop or a children's clothing store or something along those lines, which would be very adorable. So, thank you, thank you very much for your comments. This week, I attended the Pinehurst Beverly Park meeting at Lyons Park, and there was a really great showing from EPD that joined for the meeting, including Officer Chad House, which was very wonderful to see him in person again. So, I wanted to, so there's been some safety concerns at the park, and so the officers shared a lot of really great information and resources that people can use when they see behavior that's not safe for the neighborhood. And there was also a big discussion too about traffic safety, especially along Broadway, or excuse me, Beverly, between Boeing Field and by the mall heading northbound along Beverly. And so, I'd be thinking about that quite a bit and have some ideas in the hopper that I'm not quite ready to share yet, but I look forward to ways that our Built Environment Committee can address a lot of the traffic calming initiatives that folks have been, traffic calming, challenges that folks have been sharing a lot of frustrations about, me included. So, and just one last thing, I wanted to thank my colleagues for their support for the Arlington Pride Resolution last Monday. It's very important to show our support to the LGBTQIA+ community, not just here in Everett, but across all of Snohomish County. And I was really thrilled that the edits and suggestions that I made and provided to the mayor and to my colleagues during the meeting last, the Wednesday before that, were included in the final draft to strengthen it. So, I was really glad to see that. So, that's all for me tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwab.
I too want to thank everyone that comes to our meetings and speaks. I know sometimes it can be difficult, and appreciate hearing all the feedback. And Dennis, I hear you. Thank you for putting together a packet. And sometimes we don't get a lot of information from people that speak, so I really appreciate your preparation. And I saw you there speaking with Deputy Chief Rose, so thank you for that, Chief, if you could communicate with them. And I'd be happy to sit down and have coffee with you in one of your many places and listen to you a little more in depth, so.
I mean, Don, you're ready.
All right, thanks. It's been, I guess, a busy week. Our city and some of our members here are part of an organization called Snohomish County Cities and Towns, and it's, as I mentioned before, a lot of the challenges that we have here in Everett, like homelessness and public safety issues are regional. And so, we've been working with some different cities to try to, as had been brought up before, work with the legislature and work with the county and the state, try to address some of our issues regionally. We had a presentation from the AWC and their legislative director. So, I would encourage council members, if this body had something specific, I know we've had some debate over who represents our legislative agenda and some specific bills that perhaps we can get on this. And our Governmental Affairs Director, Jennifer Gregerson, is here every meeting, so I'd like to see it process start a little earlier so we can have some feedback and be more jointly connected with the mayor's positions on some of the bills. Also, we had a guest from Snohomish County Prosecutor's Office talk about what the county prosecuting office is doing in response to Blake's decision. And a lot of the things they presented were very preliminary. Today, we had a safe committee, or safe committee, steering committee meeting with council, and we talked about two main issues. One was a buffer zone ordinance. The mayor's staff put together two proposals. One centered around the Fred Meyer in South Everett, and the other one centered around Rockefeller and Everett Avenue. And there'll be more information to come with MAP. You'll get all emails, and there'll be plenty of time to have debate, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Also, I sent the council, there's been a lot of talk, including the ADUs, about response to the state legislature and growth management. And I just recently sent you a fact sheet about implementing middle housing in response to some of the legislation. I'll be sending you some more here in the next couple of weeks. One more thing, hate to be a little critical here, but I have to express my concern that for eight months, since eight months ago, we had a veto of a legislation that four out of the seven here passed on project labor agreements. And I just think eight months is too long. And I appreciate the mayor forming a committee involving Councilmember Tuie and I, but the last two meetings have been canceled. It's really, I appreciate all the efforts been put into it, but eight months without any type of presentation prepared or legislation prepared, it's tough to be positive about it. So, I'm really concerned if there's just a new tact that someone like myself or other council members want to do to work on some other proposal for project labor agreement. If this committee isn't going to work out, then I'd like to start considering it. So, I just wanted to express my disappointment, and hopefully, very quickly, we can come up with something. And feel free, if the administration wants to make a comment at some point. So, I'd appreciate it if we move that along quicker than the past, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fossey. Did the administration want to make a comment?
I would just add that I know we're waiting on at least one of the consultants to bring back information to the task force with the information that was requested. And I'll follow up, I think maybe, maybe we can reconnect as particularly with Council Vice President Tuie and Councilmember Schwab on what that is that we're waiting for, along with Executive Director Cummings and the other staff that are responsible for that, with just some more detail. I talked with them a little bit a few days ago, but I don't, I just sort of, I know that that's what the issue was, but I don't know the details beyond it. So, I'll, we'll get a meeting so that we can at least ensure that you know why the last two meetings were canceled and what the status is.
Okay. I just wanted to say, I hear you. Thanks. Fellow Councilmember Schwab. And for all of the speakers that were coming tonight, thank you. I'm loving seeing so much community participation at our meetings lately. Regarding Sean, your email, I got that. I was hoping maybe I can hear from administration, or we can set something up so I can get a little bit of clarity on the broadness of that term and why we have that. That would be great. Angie, if you could work with Jennifer and anybody else that wanted to be involved in that. Just making sure we don't have a quorum. Regarding the QFC-related area issues, did our police or the administration want to speak to that at all?
We did receive that, the packet that Councilmember Schwab referenced a little bit earlier today. So, it was just, I would say, maybe like five hours ago, so I don't necessarily have anything more tonight on it.
Well, as far as that you will follow up with them?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so they should be expecting something from you?
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right. And I also got to attend Arlington Pride, and I am, it was a very wonderful event, very well-attended, and I am very thrilled that the city of Arlington decided to, in fact, enforce the armed intimidation state law and keep everybody safe. And so, kudos to them on doing the right thing there. That was really exciting to hear. I also was able to attend our Everett Salty Sea Days. That was neat to see all the music and the food trucks, of course. And then, this last Tuesday, I was able to actually watch the mayor give a very thorough presentation to our local Delta Neighborhood Association. And I know that they appreciate that, and we had it out in the park. And speaking of Jackson Park, they are going to be doing, and they're looking for volunteers for Saturday, July 29th. From 10:00 to 12:00, they're looking for volunteers to do weeding and kind of cleanup, painting, spreading mulch, et cetera. So, that is Saturday, July 29th. If there's any volunteers out there that want to help clean up our park, there's a nice opportunity to volunteer there. And I was also able to attend the Historical Commission. It sounds like there's some exciting things coming to Colby and visit, just before this, Andy's Place with Compass Health, and that was a really beautiful facility. The upcoming events that I think you guys should really take note of, aside from the cleanup, is also on July 29th is the Third Annual Shakespeare in the Park. And if you're familiar with that, they're going to be doing the Tempest. So, over at Wiggins Hollow, 4:00 PM, they'll have activities with the Shack Art Center there. It's a great family event, and then at 5:00, they're going to be doing a performance of the Tempest. So, that would be a great community event. I hope you all can make it, it's always had a really good turnout, and it's been a lot of fun. And then, there's also the Nubian Jam going on, but once you hit the Nubian Jam, you can head over to Wiggins Hollow Park over in the Delta Neighborhood and then go see the Tempest. National Night Out is also coming up. A lot of neighborhoods do a lot of A lot of neighborhoods do a lot of events with that, so come Tuesday, August 1st, head to your local National Night Out and get involved with the community. And that is all I have for today.
Thank you. Councilmember Zaringo.
Well, I would also like to thank those who come here to comment, both who have commented so far and those who will. And on the subject of comments, I guess, for Sean in particular, one of the things that's really useful is your effort to understand perhaps why that regulation for the first-floor uses was there in the first place. That helps us understand how we might change or tune the trade-offs in that, because that, bringing that kind of information to us and understanding some of the background for it may help us make a better choice in terms of the ordinance or the regulations so that we can fulfill some of the intent of those regulations in terms of how behavior is and how activities are on those streets, but also then have a more active downtown and have those services in a more convenient place. So, I think that's worth a separate inquiry to see about some modifications that way. So, thank you for bringing that. Trade-offs and understanding those and weighing those are one of the most important things that we do, also one of the most difficult and sometimes agonizing, so I appreciate that. For my own neighborhood, I went to the first meeting in quite a while of the Silver Lake Neighborhood Association, actually under its previous name. It started back in, I think, 1988, so it's one of the neighborhood organizations that really predates our Office of Neighborhoods. A group spinning that back up and getting it active again, working on the Clean Everett Day and cleaning up some more of the neighborhood. So, I'm really happy to see and support people doing that in their neighborhoods. That's important for communications, for feedback, both ways. So, thanks to the folks who are working on that there and committing their time and energy to it. And to avoid repeating anybody else, I think I'll quit my comments there.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogel.
Fantastic. Good evening. First off, this has nothing to do with anybody, but a parking space in downtown, there's a facilities truck in the council parking. So, that's council parking. I don't know why it's there, but I'm mentioning that because it's there all the time, and then there's this car, and there's only four spaces, so, okay, somebody can do something about that. I took my daughter to Arlington Pride, and I supported Councilmember Jan Schuette, I think is how you pronounce it, and I apologize if that is not, because she read their proclamation for all the folks there. And we painted Pride flags and such with watercolors, and then they have a really great, you know, there's the library sharing boxes that you see around towns. There's an art sharing box, so my daughter shared some art and took some art, so that was a really neat idea. Holly Neighborhood is having a block party also Saturday, July 29th, from 4:30 to 6:30. And without giving the address of it, because it's at somebody's house, I would recommend emailing or finding Westmont Holly Neighborhood Association on Facebook or online, because there's also a website. And Sean and anybody else, I think I heard quite a few councilmembers wondering about the service providers not being allowed on the block, the block, the base floor of our buildings. And the vote was taken on August 29th, 2018. There's also a Cairo 7 News article, and I know that you can start looking there. I know that for, because it was for the Metro Everett Plan. So, you can find the Metro Everett Plan. It was just before I was elected that that vote was taken, and there was quite a lot of discussion, and it was an amendment that was made to make the Metro Everett Plan go forward. So, check that out. And Dennis, Downtown Dennis, get out of town. Just kidding, I don't want you to get out of town, but you said it yourself. I am pleased to see the packet of information, and I find it very interesting that you bring this up right now, today, because, yes, it is happening all over our town and county and states, really. We will be talking about the Waits Motel later, and there has been serious, oh, that's another thing. There's been serious information about that, and, you know, we're talking about homelessness and not having enough places for people to go. And your properties are experiencing that very much, and you have compassion and need something done. And we all need something done in our town. Like you said, we need to just do something. Well, you're right. We need to house, we need to service, we need to feed, we need to supply bathrooms, we need to be able to supply food, water, and Narcan. So, that's the job of the Everett City Council to get those things accomplished within the city of Everett. So, I'm just putting that out there so that your cognitive dissonance can try to work against itself and maybe just be cognitive. There's lots of things happening and lots of things that need to happen, and we're hearing about it all the time and trying to do something, or not. And, thank you caller, Shola. I did attend the barbecue at the Waits Motel, and I spoke personally and met some delightful people that actually live there and that have lived there for, well, let's see, a few have been, a couple of years, six years, 10 years. If they are displaced, at least one of them will die, like, almost immediately. So, we need to, when it comes to that, talk about how, if this ordinance goes through, how we can make sure that with our lack of housing, they are housed. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Tui.
Yeah, I do agree with Councilmember Vogel. We do need to have a plan for the folks if this moves forward to ensure that they're taken care of, so hopefully, we'll get that. Thank you, Councilmember Schwab. I agree with the frustrations on the timeline with the project labor agreement, and hopefully, we can get some answers with our meeting later this, hopefully, soon. And as far as, nice to see you, Downtown Dennis, and I'm hoping that we can work with QFC and the school, because, yes, we do need, we can't let it just stay there. We have to clean it up, and if we have to clean it up every day, we do that. We do that downtown. Downtown Business Association is out there every morning, cleaning all of our walkways, our, you know, around our businesses, as well as we clean ourselves. So, it's something that just has to be done. Did have a nice afternoon. I want to thank Angie and PIPA. We, Council President and I, got to spend a couple hours with the, our Sister City Exchange students from Iwakuni, and we were here in the council chambers, and they loved sitting in the chairs and all got their pictures taken. And I want to thank the host families. These kids will be here for two weeks, and they're touring all around Everett and just having a great time. They love it, and we're very appreciative of the time that they're here, as well as meeting with us in the chambers today. So, that was nice. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say that, as Vice President Tui mentioned, we had our Sister City 14 high school students here. It was very fun to hear from them and hear their interesting questions about how we do our government and how, what our community is like. I found it was fascinating that they talked about, in their community, one of the biggest challenges, that they have a declining population, particularly of young children, so I guess that's common in Japan, but in their community, all the young kids are moving to the big cities. So, that was interesting, and they have a lot of fun things planned in their visit here, so it was really an energizing meeting. I'm really happy with the Everett Community College for organizing such a thing. That's all for me. Do we have an administrative update this evening?
Just two short items. So, last week, Mr. Wyatt's from the Delta Neighborhood made an effort to connect him with our state representatives and senators, particularly regarding RV homesteading issues and the legislation, you know, the state-level issues that, you know, the city, as the mayor said last week, does all that we can, but there are sometimes other issues that his perspective might be useful at that level. And then, the family that visited last week, our co-ed staff has been in touch with them. They had, actually had an appointment scheduled with them already, and so, they did have a meeting. I don't have further follow-up, but just so that you know that that is happening. And then, I'll have a nice little list to talk to you guys about next week of some things that were mentioned, so, thanks.
Thank you. And now, we'll hear about if we have any legal updates. Mr. Hall.
No report and no executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the seven consent items?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of the seven consent agenda items.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. The motion and the second on the consent. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zaringo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Vice President Tui?
Yes.
President Stonecifer?
Yes. And now, we have two proposed action items. Item eight is a second reading. It's already been read into the record, but I will read item nine into the record because it's the first reading. Item nine is Council Bill 2307-38, first reading. Adopting ordinance changing the downtown business improvement area, BIA budget, amending ordinance number 3582-17 as amended. And the third and final reading on this item will be on August 9th. Does council, I know we have some speakers on item eight, but does council have any questions or comments on these items at this time? Okay, Angie, who do we have signed up to speak on either of our proposed action items?
Okay, so Nancy, if you could please come to the podium. State your full name, city of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Nancy Hector. I live in Everett. I want to address a few things that I did not get in last week, and that is that Waits Motel is a motel. It's not an apartment, it's not a homeless shelter. It's used for many things. I can tell you a lot of things about Waits. When you think of it, it's 8,000 square feet. You take off 1,000 square feet for the apartment, that leaves 7,000 square feet for 24 units. So, that's like 300 square feet. It has a bathroom, very small. Being a motel, it does not have an official kitchen. They might put in a microwave and a portable refrigerator, but that's not a kitchen. So, I also understand that a lot of the agencies that put the people, their clients into the motel, they're paying up to $2,400 a month for a 300-square-foot, not a full apartment. Some have children, some are single, some are double. It's not enough room to be called an apartment or a homeless shelter. There's no area for the children to play that have to stay there, that go to Whittier School. So, its purpose as a motel is outdated. No one is going through Everett that is looking for Waits Motel to spend the night. So, how that motel is supported in the past has been vouchers, drugs, illegal activity. And that's what it all comes down to. This is what this is on the agenda, is being this condemned or whatever you want to say it, because it's unsafe and it's illegally run. And so, putting some paint in the motel is not bringing it up to the standards that you would want to put anyone in there. So, I'm asking you to follow through and, next week, help us out, help the neighborhood out. I wanted to ask Liz, when you went to the barbecue on Sunday, did you visit any of the neighbors? No. So, you got one side of it, and I wish you would have come out and knocked on our doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next, we have Sean. If you could please come to the podium, followed by Amy.
Good evening. My name's Sean. I live in Everett. I think it was July 12th that I spoke last. One of the things that resonated with me is that you all said you have an obligation to protect the community. Tonight, you spoke about providing different services, bathrooms, et cetera, for the community, and protecting the community is obviously a big factor. So, one of the stories I want to share is something that happened in December. We get a babysitter for the kids. We go Christmas shopping. We, on the way out, see two males in a vehicle, look very suspicious. They catch our eye. It's not uncommon, but we go out. We come home hours later. The two men are still there, they've got their lights on, they're fidgeting, things are odd. We consult each other. What should we do? Do we take these gifts out of the car? We're so scared what to do. I said, "Let's just sit here for a second." They don't move. Okay, let's call the police. So, we let them know that we have all these gifts, we'd like to unload if they could get these people to move on or maybe assist us. Sometimes come by, nothing's, nobody's came, so now it's like, alright, well, let's just get them out, and we'll be very careful. So, first load goes in, and I look out the window, and sure enough, there's a male at the back of the van, and he is standing there with the gifts. And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, I gotta go talk to this guy." Walk out there, and he goes, "Hey, your name's Sean?" I go, "Yeah." He goes, "Did you call the cops on me?" Well, he's a cop. He's a police officer. There were two undercover police officers. They're working that night because somebody had pistol-whipped somebody at the motel and robbed them, and they needed to find this gentleman. That is the kind of thing that happens on a continuous basis. It may not be every week, but it's an ongoing process. And you said somebody would be dead if they left. Then, it's your obligation as a council to not only protect us and get rid of the motel, but also find somewhere for that person to go. If they have the funds to stay there, then maybe there's enough left over to bring them somewhere else. One of the concerns was, where are all these people going to go? What is there, 10, 20? I have six people in my house, okay? Spread those 10, 20 people out throughout this north end. The impact will not be that large. I ask you to finish the job, go through what we've started, and make this neighborhood a better place. Make it safe for all of us to live. It's unfortunate that the gentleman owns the motel is not here. He has a really nice person who's defending the building, and I respect it, but I do not respect him or his business practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Amy, could you please come to the podium? Followed by Robert.
Is that Amy Morik?
Yes.
My name is Amy Morik. I come from Anchorage, Alaska, and I'm here on, to support our son, my husband's son and his wife, Emily. So, I really appreciate the respect that people have for each other here and the opportunity, you know, that you lay out for everyone to express their point of view. It's just so, we got to watch the hearing last week, and we just admired your, I don't know, your respect for each other. And, but sometimes, being so close to a situation, you don't see, I think you might overlook And, but sometimes, being so close to a situation, you don't see, I think you might overlook some things. And one of them is that, what we noticed was the speed of this hearing. And it was on July 5th that the chief, Dan Templeton, had turned in his report on the hundreds of, you know, issues that happened at the Waits Motel from, you know, June 22nd, you know, until, what, June 23rd. And then the next day, the mayor was able to sign the ordinance saying, "Yes, this is a neighborhood blight." And so what we noticed about the crimes was that from, you know, June 22nd, you know, until March, that they were very, the full range of crimes that occurred there. But after that, there was a tragic suicide that had been reported. But then the violence that was so prevalent before wasn't there in the reports. And so we noticed that. And so from above determination, on July 5th, you know, and then July 6th, in the speed of this hearing, you know, having the first and second readings, you know, on August 2nd, this is less than a month that he's, this Mr. Said will be forced, you know, to accept what the city of Everett considers fair market value, rather than follow his own business plans. And then, and I'm so glad to hear that there's a plan, that you hope to have a plan, you know, for people that are there, that they'll be safe, you know, when they, if it is indeed demolished. But I'm glad to hear that, you know, twice, that's reiterated and stuff. But in the press release, they say that the city of Everett intends to redevelop it with residential housing, after you demolish the structure and work with the developer. But it's like, unless the city has already identified a buyer, then that lot will be empty. And that will invite its own criminal activity with this. Or you'll have to hire, you know, some kind of security or put up a fence, you know. This is, you know, it's not a simple solution to demolish. And our Emily and our Doug, you know, they were considering lots of ideas, many plans. They were just getting so creative. And, you know, it might, some of their plans might require, you know, getting rezoning. Or, you know, it might, they might have this fabulous, you know, hotel. And we're very proud of them, and I hope that you will give them a chance. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy. Robert, please come to the podium, followed by Doug.
Hi, I'm Bob Bull. I live in Everett. And I'm going to talk about non-conforming uses. The Waits Motel has been in nonconformity with the surrounding neighborhood for many years. Residents protested the city from granting a variance on that property back in 1957. That's the year it was built. And in 1996, we as neighbors, including Nancy Hecht, led by Rob and Stephanie Larson, appealed the decision by this city that would allow the owner of Waits to build an apartment be above the motel so that it could become an apartment. The hearing examiner stated in the decision to our successful appeal that the use of the subject property for purposes other than short-term lodging and losing its compatibility with surrounding properties, so losing its, excuse me, the expansion of the nonconforming use does nothing except to expand an already sorry situation for this neighborhood. That was the hearing examiner. It further stated that this creates a more intense nonconforming use. The decision went on to say the applicant was required to revert back to the historical use of the property for motel purposes and not to use the subject property as an apartment, rental, or any other multifamily use. Yes, it's been quiet there for the past five months. After it was cited as a chronic nuisance, and now there is this resolution. The owner has an employee there making many different statements about a possible, possible future for the property. We have seen this so many times, and the motel always, always, always cycles back to criminal activity. As property owners, we rely on our city government to make sure our neighbors, like Waits Motel, don't damage our property values, our public safety, or quality of life. For almost three decades, the Waits has been a threat to the safety of the surrounding residents while it has cycled as a walk-up drug market. How did it get so bad that we felt like we were living in a war zone last year? This needs to end. Can we finally close the chapter on this ongoing problem with its nonconforming use, the criminal activity that attracts, and the ongoing threat to the north end of Everett? There are so many good things to celebrate in our community, like our walkable neighborhoods, a world-class hospital, a growing community college and state university, and a beautiful arboretum and marina. Please put an end to this nightmare so that we can all enjoy these things in peace of mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next, Doug Senior, if you could please come to the podium.
My name is Doug Modig Senior. I live in Anchorage, Alaska. And my son asked me down, partly by, to support, but also to share my experience in working with neighborhoods, that mostly neighborhoods that have a tremendous amount of difficulty. I started working with people in Portland, Oregon during the time that they were moving the people from the slums, basically, to the other side of the river. And so then the population that I worked with were what you would call street alcoholics. I also, and I also worked with Alaska natives in 180 different villages. And what the elders told us when they first approached us, both in Portland and in Alaska, was that the issue was dependency. That people were dependent upon other people to help them, to actually, to solve their problems. And so, and so cities, many of them tend to play what they call whack-a-mole. You know, whack one problem, make that go away. Whack another problem, make that one go away. And ultimately, you get nowhere really, really fast. And by getting nowhere fast, then you begin to try to dissect it and say, "Well, this is the problem," or "That is the problem." And ultimately, when you have a community that is doing what they need to do to take care of themselves, they then have the possibility of making your community a better place. But it's messy, you know, just like relationships, just like, you know, your councils and running a council. It's messy. You're not, there are no real clear paths to find what you need to do to help a community take care of themselves. And ultimately, being willing to sit down with people, like Liz from the, that went to the, went to the picnic, right? A willingness to sit down and talk to people. Well, you know, you do need to reach out and reach a greater number of people because it isn't a simple, one person can solve this problem. I mean, I would like to think that change in a law and which is going to change the, is going to change the environment. But as police chief, yeah, knows, that isn't going to happen. You know, there's a multitude of issues that goes on, especially when you're attempting to address an issue related to how to make the community a better place and how to make a community a better place for all. And in order to do that, everyone needs to come to the table. And if they're not at the table, you need to reach out to them. Because the issue is dependency. They're waiting for somebody else to solve the problem for you. And then you got the ball right now. They're asking you to solve the problem. Well, if you could, if simply changing the ordinance was going to solve it, good luck with that. I, that's the end of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Lath, could you please come to the podium, followed by Bill?
Good evening. My name's Lath Almaki, but currently residing in Kirkland, Washington. Though, I am a product of Everett. My father actually grew up, or I grew up here, but my father worked out of Boeing. And some of the best memories I have of the area is coming into downtown, going to the waterfront, experiencing just what it was to be in a big city. So the reason I'm here today is I wanted to talk about the Waits Motel. Why? Well, I'm a qualified buyer for the hotel. Doug and Emily, I grew up with them. They approached me, and they, they know a lot about my history. They know about, a lot about my story. And they mentioned that this was a prime opportunity for a business venture. Now, why that matters to me? Well, like the other gentlemen, I own a lot of property. I have a lot of money. I have too much money than probably most people do. And the thing is, I didn't before. When I was 20, I was homeless. I had nowhere to live. I lived out of my car. And the only opportunity I ever had was a place like the Waits, where I could stop. I could get my stuff together. I could figure out where I was going to go. And that gave me every opportunity to become who I am today. And they know I look for every opportunity to invest into my community, and this is the opportunity for me. Now, the reason why we haven't moved forward with this is because the ordinance is happening right now. I'm not going to put a lot of money into something that's going to get torn down. So I'm in a wait, watch, and listen moment. But I was compelled to come here because I know those two have made a huge difference. Those two, right now, have made it so the Waits is a safe place to be. If I came to you in January, it was rough. I've heard every story. I've read the articles. I've seen the news reports. It was bad. But it's not bad now. And that's because before, it was mismanaged. Before, it was not, it was not treated like a business. It was treated like a commodity or a flight of fancy, in my opinion. But now, when Emily and Doug have invested the time and effort and energy necessary to clean up the space, it is fantastic. It's quiet. The crime rate is low, nonexistent, frankly. And the human safety factors are addressed. Now, I recognize that there are certain things that are placed on the doors stating that there's a need for the health department to come through and clear that up. But that's because it is a process component that we're waiting on. We're currently waiting on for the health department to go through the process, to have removed the signs that are on there because they've already taken the steps necessary to clean the property. My interest ultimately is I want to actually make a difference in the community that I grew up in. The Waits Motel provides us an opportunity for those that are experiencing homelessness to get a place to stop, to get themselves collected, and move on. But it's also a niche opportunity for the hospital that's nearby. Traveling nurses can use this space as a location to stay as they work out of the nearby hospital and move out. I think it's a huge business investment and a huge opportunity. But again, I'm compelled to wait, watch, and listen. And I appreciate you, ladies and gentlemen, for listening to me.
Thank you, Lath. Bill, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Doug.
Hello, everybody. My name is Bill McKinnock. I'm a property owner here in Everett, and I love it here. I really do. I haven't been to a council meeting before, and I haven't said the Pledge of Allegiance in a long time. And it says, what, "One country, indivisible"? We're really kind of getting divided here, and it's, I find it sad. But why don't you guys be around Everett a while? You've heard of Tweaker Cam? The Tweaker Cam down there on the internet, you could watch from anywhere in the world, all the crap that went on down by the Mission. Where is it now? We had a big problem down there. You guys went in. All that stuff's been cleaned up. Those people moved on. Some of them have got housing. I don't know where they all went. But that's, what's that saying? How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. Well, that was one of the bites. And the Waits Motel, if you told me a year ago that I'd be standing here defending that place that three of my friends have died in over the years, I would have said, "Bullshit. That place needs, I'm sorry. That place needs to be bulldozed." And that's really what I thought. And then somebody told me about this thing they were having last Sunday, where I could go down and I could look around the property, see what's going on, talk to the people that live there, and see what kind of place it is. I did that. I bet you down there, I'm glad you took the time to go and investigate with your own eyeballs what's going on down there because that's not what it used to be. Like I said, I would have said before, "Pare that place down." I don't feel that way anymore. I feel it's doing some good for our community. And that's, that's what it's going to take, one little bit at a time. We have so many problems out, out in our community with the drugs and all that crap. I don't have a solution. But like, one bite at a time. That's how we need to do it. And that's why I'd like to see you leave it alone for now. I'm not saying totally throw that on the table. I'd like to see a table that for six months, see what's going on. Some of the people that have lived there for a long time, I get it. They're through. They've had it. Look at the police, the police statistics for the last six months. Hundreds of calls there in that place. And you look at the graph, bam, it's gone down. There's hardly any reason for those cops to go there anymore. So they're making a difference. Yeah, I've heard that song and dance before. And I agree with that a lot of times. At least table this for six months and see what they're able to do with the place. Look at it again and make a decision on what's going on. I don't think I've used up all my time, but I think I said what I needed to say. And I hope you guys, you know, Mrs. Simpson, the manager down there, go down and talk to her. She'd love to have you down there. She'll show you around and let you see what's going on in that place. That 7-Eleven that was next door that's gone? That was a lot of the problem, was that 7-Eleven. I would not shop in that store because of all the riffraff that hung out in front of it. On my way here tonight, I drove past UFC. I counted 12 people in their parking lot. They were less than desirable citizens. And I was driving down the good side of the store. I live by there. I see what's going on. But that hedge back there with people in the bushes sitting down there, you know, one bite at a time. Thanks. I hope you listened to me.
Thank you, Bill. Doug, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Emily?
So basically, we're ready.
Sir, can you please stand here?
Sorry. My name is Doug Modig. I live in Camino Island. I'm currently residing at the Waits Motel. Basically, we're ready. We're ready to acquire the place. We have pretty much everything, everything all set up, ready to go. But with the, with the blight kind of hovering in the background, it's, it's basically being a huge, huge blockade. And I don't think this, this place is even a blight. Just considering the, just considering the numbers. If you look at 2020, 195 calls. 2021, 204 calls. 2022, 225 calls. 2023, we're sitting at 79 calls. 55 of them, before we even got there. Single-handedly, me and Emily, well, I guess that's two. We got a drop in a month of 55%. Dropped again, another 48%. That's just a two-month period. Currently, and all the calls that are coming in now, non-drug-related, non-violent. They're just regular people needing help. Right now, we need your help. We need you to take this off the table. Bring this, save your tax dollars. This will, this will probably cost you guys 1.4, 1.4 million, just to acquire it. Another couple hundred thousand dollars just to, just to demo it, and lots and lots of time. This is one of those things where we can't work at the speed of government. We need, we need someone as motivated as me and Emily to work on this issue, just like we have been. And all you really need to do is take it off the table on a piece of property that isn't even considered a blight. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Emily, could you please come to the podium?
Hello. My name's Emily Simpson, and I reside in the Waits Motel in Everett, Washington. Again, yes, I'm asking for you to alleviate the blight and table it for at least six months. Give us some more time to prove to the neighborhood. I think the neighbors are the ones I'm most concerned about and I think deserve their fears to be addressed. So I hope I can get invited over and have some discussions about what my plans are to keep it safe in the long term. So, I hope I can get invited over and have some discussions about what my plans are to keep it safe in the long term. And, that's pretty much all I gotta say for right now. Can I yield my time to Doug? All right, it's been one heck of a journey. I really want you guys to think about the how. I wish you guys could come over to the Waits and ask me, how did you do it? I have a lot of really good ideas, and I really, really care. This crisis of the opiate addiction in Everett, it's terrible. And I have results, and I have ideas, I have plans, and I have methods on how to help these businesses and help these properties that actually work. So, please come over and let me tell you some of the how, some of the methods, some of the whys, so that we can actually get better. We need it. People do, I mean, people really, really need it. Everyone's complaining about it, and it's really, really sad. But, yeah, come over, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And President Stonecypher, the last commenters in relation to item 11.
For item 11, great, thank you. These are proposed actions, so we don't have any action to take tonight. But, I would like to ask if my council colleagues would like to make comments on either item 8 or 9. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you for the commenters tonight. I'd like to make a request of administration for next week's third and final reading to come back with a report on the people that are occupied at, or that have occupancy at Waits Motel, what the plan is for the people who do accept services, what the plan is for people who don't accept services, and if there's a, city has a plan to work with Doug and Emily to incorporate their ideas into any future spaces, either in that location or across the city. Because I think that there is a really beautiful vision there that could be incorporated at some point in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmembers? Councilmember Vogli.
Thank you, everybody. Nancy, thank you for calling me out. And, I did not knock on any doors over there, but I have been able to hear you here 'cause you are able-bodied and have a vision and need to tell us about it. And, we have heard from a lot of neighbors. I do have friends that live over there, so I've also heard it, and I've been at their house. And, okay, yes. So, so there's that. You're here twice now, and I haven't, I've only been able to meet the people at the Waits Motel because I went there. That was a great undercover cop story. And it's sad that it had to happen, and scary as all get out. So, absolutely. And then, that was not funny for the cop to do that. But, you know, we can all laugh about it now, right? I am curious, and maybe someone here can answer this. This is the second time Mr. Wold has cited that the Waits Motel is nuisance property, like there's a list, nuisance property. The first time I heard it was February 1st, and that was, well, quite some time ago. And then, I heard you say it again today, 'cause I've been watching the videos. And, so I'm not sure what that is, since we hadn't been discussing if this was a blighted, you know, what is that list? I don't expect anybody in the audience to know that, but I would expect someone to know that, maybe an EPD. And, we definitely need, I know it's not a, it's not supposed to be a residence. I don't think either it's supposed to be a place where, and this is what I've heard, not what I have proof of, jails, not just, you know, Snohomish County, but other places drop people off to stay there, whether they can afford it or not after they gotten out of jail. The hospital drops people off that don't have a place to go through Hope Link after they've had surgery, but there's nowhere to go. Some of those people that are selling drugs are the ones that have just gotten out of surgery and need the money to pay. So, these are just all the stories that one can hear if you go and talk to the folks. And there are a lot of stories that I hear from the people that live, homeowners in that area. I was all for closing down the Waits. And you'll see that I have now changed my mind from my resolution vote to what is currently going on in my head and out there because I have looked at the information. And I've gone back and looked at the information, I've visited, they've got a community, well, it's not a community, but they have a garden going on. The people feel safe. Okay, so there's Rosemary, and Joe, and Carla, and I can't remember some other names, but he has a tumor and he's on crutches, and they can't get here. They can't get here. And I stayed there hours, much after everything had been torn down. Not torn down, taken down and put away. So, I would recommend that you also, you've been invited to visit with Emily. You'll find it's a safe place now. And I bet the residents would also like to talk with you too. 'Cause you care. I know you do. You care for your families. I know you want, I'm sorry, but, write me an email. And I will visit you too, and we'll get that down too. I'm one of seven. And, so we need to know, when did it really become a nuisance? I know when, but like this legal term or something, you know, what is this list? This nuisance property list? And when did they get on it, and when did they get off of it? The people that are living there, I need to know. We need to know that there is a plan for if and when it gets demolished. And, thank you for all of your commentary. And I'm happy to talk offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmembers have any comments on their proposed action items? Seen none. We will next go to our action item 10. Request council to approve the acceptance of approximately $4 million from Snohomish County to be used for purchase of a new congregate shelter site. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept.
Thank you.
Second that.
Thank you. A motion and a second on the table. And Julie, good evening. Do you have a briefing for us tonight on this item?
I got excited for a minute, I thought you were gonna go right to the vote, and I didn't have to say anything. So, I was just gonna give you a little bit of background, but it's not a lot of information. I just, the city has wanted the shelter at the location on 16th and Rockefeller to be relocated for multiple years due to the negative impacts to the surrounding neighborhood and businesses, and the overall impact to the downtown core, and the allocation of resources for public safety and public health responses. The county put forth efforts between November of 2022 and April of 23 to purchase Hope Covenant Church, but those efforts were entered following neighborhood pushback. In late April, the city received a memo from the county stating that they have allocated $4 million, and they would like the city to use it to purchase a new location to relocate the 40-bed congregate shelter that's downtown, as well as add 60 additional climate emergency shelter beds. Since then, city teams have been communicating with county administration and human services to better understand the parameters stated in their memo, and received additional information that have made us feel more comfortable to accept the funds and to work to find a new shelter location. This recommendation was shared with the Health and Human Service Council Committee who supported the acceptance of this fund. And I'd also like to note that these funds have absolutely nothing to do with the previous conversation around Waits Motel. Tonight, council is being asked to approve the acceptance of that $4 million from Snohomish County for congregate shelter. And once approved, city staff will begin diligently exploring possible locations and working ongoing with county human services staff to execute necessary agreements.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Ryan, and then councilmembers Arlingo.
Thanks, Julie. In the agenda packet, there's the checklist, and that was the first that I had seen, the criteria for 40, I've heard of the criteria before, but this is the first that I've seen, the checklist. Is the checklist a product from the meetings that have been going on with the county? Or is this something the city has put together? Or is it something the county put together? What are the origins, I guess?
Oh, well, the county provided their version of the checklist. We actually worked with the county last fall when they were establishing kind of parameters for the days in, and we provided them with kind of our checklist of what we would want in the city for shelter. And so, I feel like it's a combination of both city and county saying that these are the ideal things that we need, kind of the gold standard, things that we can try and strive for. Certainly, a climate-based, 60 beds for climate-based is something we need every single year, and we, every single year seem to struggle to find it. So, if we could find a location that could meet both the needs, that would be ideal. But, the county also understands it's really hard to cite shelters. So, if we don't end up finding a site that ends up being able to accommodate both, it sounds like they're really, you know, interested to have those conversations with us, change plans accordingly, get the job done, even if it's not perfect, so.
Thanks. Is there a way to know just how many buildings in Everett would actually check all of these boxes? I'm worried that the pool is so small, and then, there are so many troubles with citing the previous ones that there might not be an option that checks all the boxes and is in a viable space, location?
Well, it's absolutely gonna be a challenge, but I think that one of the other briefings we've had in the past, that we have, every neighborhood needs 100 shelter beds if we're gonna accommodate our future growth. So, we all collectively have to work really hard, and we have to really make good choices and defend our choices for citing, and be able to take some of the complaints and the concerns and be able to mitigate them, and try and make sure that we can cite these shelters and new locations, and really educate our community and create great shelters that neighbors aren't affected, and will start wanting to have shelters and understanding the importance of them.
Great. And then, is there a timeline that we're, or any sort of deadlines that we need to be concerned about? I know there was a lease extension at UCC. And then, with accepting this money, is there a time by which we need to spend it? Or, what are some deadlines we need to keep in mind?
As far as using the $4 million, there's no deadline. So, the county, you know, it's not ARPA funds, it has to be executed by a certain date. So, that gives us the breathing room. As far as the expediency of needing more shelter, a new shelter, like we needed that three years ago, right? So, absolutely, we need to use, move really quickly. There are some moving parts at UCC with the church potentially making some real estate decisions. There's some funding changes with the county funding that may end after December 30th. So, there's a lot of moving parts, so I don't have an exact plan for the UCC shelter today. But, my understanding, you know, and our commitment and the county's commitment is certainly not to displace people until we have a plan for where they will go.
Thank you.
Councilmember Arlingo.
Thank you for the presentation, Julie. One of the things I noted here, the action item's title says specifically to be used for the purchase of a new congregate shelter site. And I know that another issue that comes along with that is the ongoing funding for that. And is that going to be in the same kind of fashion and trajectory as currently for funding of the UCC site? Or, as responsible stewards of the public purse, are we looking at our commitment that would come along with the funding commitment for operations that would come along with the purchase?
Great question, and one of the questions we definitely spoke with the county about, and they are committed to their ongoing funding of operations for this shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Angie, do we have anyone signed up to speak for public comment on this item 10?
On 10, no, we don't.
Okay, thank you. With no further questions or comments, we have a motion and a second on the table. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arlingo?
Yes.
Vice President Dewey?
Yes.
President Stonecypher.
Yes. Now, we'll move on to our briefing item. This item comes before the city council, serving as a council committee as a whole, and is likely to be scheduled at a future meeting. Item 11, adopt a resolution concurring with staff recommendation and authorizing the mayor to implement the next steps for COVID recovery-funded projects and initiatives listed in the resolution recital D. And this is for you too, Julie.
Hi, I'm back again as the conveyor of information regarding COVID relief program funds, formerly known as ARPA funds. And, I'm just gonna provide you with a brief overview of kind of where we sit today. Reminder, our total ARPA award was $20,695,570. You, as council action, have previously authorized $15,753,224. That leaves funds not yet allocated at $4,942,346. And tonight, we're going to be asking for an allocation of $2,150,000 for new ARPA projects. This is a quick snapshot of our previously approved ARPA projects. As you can see, they've either been checked off, I see that, I didn't, I'm supposed to have a red check where it says repurposed city building, because that project, as you remember, was the Silver Lake shelter, or building that burned down. So, I'm sorry, I missed that on my slide. But, most of our projects are still in progress and are rolling along. We have no major updates, aside from the fact that our next public safety gun buyback project will be on April 13th, August 13th, sorry, from 10 to noon, thank you, Jennifer. And that tonight, we're gonna have a little bit more conversation around the council recovery allocations that you approved last time we had a resolution. Jumping right into the projects that we would like to ask you to approve, we've brought these to the Health and Human Services Committee, not in its entirety, so this is a little bit new information. But, childcare and workforce development have been an ongoing priority for the COVID recovery funds since the beginning, and we've kept punting it forward. And at last, now we're coming to ask for $1 million to be allocated to the new Tomorrow's Hope Child Development Center. That Housing Hope is in the process of developing and relocating at a new site up on Federal Avenue. Housing Hope is here tonight, and I believe is gonna provide some public comment for you. In addition to additional childcare slots, they're also going to have a childcare workforce development program so that we can increase pipelines into that field so that we have more opportunities for childcare slots. The council committee was also interested in learning about what our Everett Community College Early Childhood Learning Center needs were. And in meeting with them, they didn't have necessarily a million-dollar needs right now, but they, I think you may remember that in, back in 2021, I believe, they were at risk of closure and have since been able to kind of recover and are rebuilding. They haven't been able to open up all of their classrooms, partially because they haven't been able to hire staff, which is, again, kind of speaks to the need of what Housing Hope's doing. And so, we would like to, they've also received some of the childcare money from the county to help support their operations and administration for a couple years. So, we would like to add $150,000 to their efforts to stabilize, to make sure that they have a couple years of what they need to be in a good place to continue to leave those doors open. And then, the third million, or the third project that we're asking for a million dollars is to support the redevelopment of Compass Health and the Phase 2 that they're currently almost finished with their fundraising to provide additional behavioral health services that are more intensive for individuals in our community. And approximately about 47% of those individuals are Everett residents that Compass helps through these programs. And it also will add additional 16 beds for inpatient treatment, which is also something that's desperately needed in our area. So, Compass is also here tonight if you have any specific questions. So, with that, that's the resolution that we are bringing forward, and then the action will be next week.
Okay, thank you. And do we have council questions or comments before we go to public comment? Councilmember Arlingo.
Compass Health, is that the facility that I think has got chain link around it there, and dumpsters in front of it there, that's been planned on tearing down?
On Broadway, yeah.
Yes, okay. And, do you know the timing on that? And do you know the timing on that, just generally speaking, for the tear down and reconstruction or new construction?
Do you mind if I invite Tom up to answer that question?
Absolutely, yeah. I want to make a short question.
Is this, yeah, Tom, short question, if you don't mind joining at the podium.
Hi, Tom Sebastian, CEO of Compass. Hi, Tom Sebastian, the CEO of Compass. So currently, we've raised 58 of the $65 million we need for the project and have the other sources in the pipeline. So we've gone ahead and begun the abatement process. That's going to take a little bit because of the age and size of the building. We hope to get demolition completed by the end of this calendar year. And then it's a two-year construction cycle, so we'd be looking to open the facility in January of 2026.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Vogli.
Sorry, I missed it. Just had a death of a friend. So I will watch and hear later, but I'm here now. Or maybe I'll leave, I don't know yet.
Any other questions or comments? Angie, who do we have for public comment tonight?
We have Donna, if you could please come to the podium and state your full name and city residence and you have three minutes to speak.
And there's a button that needs to be pushed? Oh, yay! My name is Donna Molten and I am a resident of Everett and I'm here in my capacity as CEO of Housing Hope and Hope Works. So I just have a couple of points that I would like to make about the new Tomorrow's Hope Child Development Center and speaking to what Julie mentioned about the recommendation. And the new, the new Tomorrow's Hope Child Development Center will add approximately 100 additional slots to the about 130 slots that we have currently in our Tomorrow's Hope Center. We are hoping that that addition will address the loss of almost 1,500 slots throughout the county for childcare due to the pandemic enclosures that happened then. We'll also host a new and expanded training space as a part of our Hope Works Job Training Academy, which will continue to present relevant curriculum and hands-on training as a part of our early childhood education employment pathway. Our increased capacity will double the number of trainees that we serve annually and will subsequently provide into the workforce well-trained early childhood education workers with supervised experience to help address the shortage on qualified candidates in this industry across the region. Secondly, the Tomorrow's Hope Child Development Center is unequivocally outgrown the space where it is currently housed on Evergreen Way. In addition to the safety challenges of the physical location on a very busy and populated road, the building is a former restaurant twice over and was never intended to serve children, nor was it designated to do so. While we've been creative, resourceful and downright scrappy in making this space work over the past couple of decades, it does not meet the needs of our community for volume, progressive programming or holistic services. Our community, the childrens and children and families that we serve deserve better. The mission, mission at Housing Hope and Hope Works is to address and break the cycles of homelessness and generational poverty. Research repeatedly and consistently shows that access to and participation in quality early education is one of the best supports for positive outcomes for children and families experiencing these conditions. Early targeted and consistent interventions like those that we provide in our center through our internal resources and collaborative partnered resources have been shown to help families address and overcome the impacts of trauma experienced as a result of exposure to both poverty and homelessness. These supports and holistic connections provide the foundation for opportunities leading to healthy and age-appropriate development that enhance school readiness and success for their, for educational careers for our children, as well as lighting a hopeful pathway for a bright and thriving future in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comments.
That concludes public comments, okay. This is a briefing item, so we won't be having, it will come back to us on the second, it'll be back for us next week. We have any last questions or comments on this item? Okay, I think that brings us to...
I was just going to ask for everybody to repeat everything. I'm just kidding. Councilmember Stonecypher, President Stonecypher, we do have a couple more slides.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Please.
I love the idea of being done quickly, but, no, not at all. So we just wanted to kind of give you another overview. Those are the numbers I gave you at the beginning, including tonight's request that we'll be bringing back next week for action. So that will leave $2,792,346 around that. And next time, or in the future, we want to talk to you about some 2020, 2024 budget items that maybe it's appropriate for us to take some time to think about how to allocate those, that remaining funds to help us with some of our priorities that you and the mayor share around human services and public safety. So more information will be coming to you on that. And then, as I said, next week, you'll be asked to give action on that resolution, as well as on April 8th, you'll be getting a inter-local agreement regarding the county's allocation for our downtown restrooms. And then I'm going to pass it on over to Jennifer, who is taking leadership on helping y'all with your COVID relief grant allocation dollars. And there you go. Thank you.
All right. So just as a reminder, you guys set aside $100,000 per council member and that can be combined. Our kind of high-level recommendation for how to proceed with that is to, of course, you could assign that at a $100,000 project, but if you wanted to divide that up, to limit that to at the $25,000 level, just to ensure that there aren't, you know, a whole host of small grants with the staff workload in mind. Augmenting current grant programs is always a great way to do that. We know that we can deliver those. And so if there's just a larger bucket of money available, that is an easy, relatively easy process. Now that the funds are shifted from ARPA to the COVID recovery fund concept, I think the concept is that these would still remain in line with those ARPA principles. We have a little bit more restriction around gifts of public funds to individuals or businesses. If you think about the Everett Forward Grants, that's not something we could do with general fund dollars that we did do with ARPA. And proceeding with this, we would want to continue the current process that you have, so the resolutions that Julie has brought forward to formalize those recommendations. And then we're here also to help if you have ideas early in the process to make sure that, you know, you don't get too far along and find out that there's legal restrictions or financial restrictions. So that is what I have and I would welcome your questions and we'll, you know, we can kind of continue this, but I'm hoping that that is helpful as you think about how to allocate those funds.
Any questions for Jennifer? Okay. Well, that now...
I'm always here for, you know, other times when the questions are more in your mind and yeah, absolutely.
Now that does bring us to the end of our agenda and with no further business, we will now adjourn.